Then I don't apologize.
We are on the air.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board for September 10th, 2024. Adam Secretary, would you do the honor and read the announcements?
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting or hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting and hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel Newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the republic, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if our board attorney, Mr. Sobieski, will please swear in our reappointee and our new appointee.
Okay, so I guess we'll do Mr. Mitchell first.
Okay, you want to do them both at the same time?
I suppose we could.
Just for clarification.
The oath's in front of you, yes, no?
I do not.
Oh, you have them, I gave them to you first.
All right, I was gonna say it'd be easier for them to follow along, but uh...
Just for clarification, for the record, we have a new member, William Mitchell, as Class One, expiring December 31st, 2024. And Scott Lavender, as a reappointee, has moved to Class Three, with the term expiring 12/31/24.
When we get to that point in the oath, just remember what your office is and then just... All right, you guys are ready? I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Scott Lavender.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of state your office.
Of?
Planning Board Class?
Planning Board Class Three here.
Okay. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment.
And that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain.
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage.
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the public.
Not available to the public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There you go. Okay. Welcome aboard. And welcome back.
Welcome, guys.
All right, so we'll uh, I'll just have to have you guys fill out these forms at the, at the end of the meeting. But you've essentially taken your office, so welcome aboard, as I said.
And now I can do the roll call.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Present.
Ms. Dills excused this evening, Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. Opelka?
Here.
Mr. Sandow is excused this evening, Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
And Chairman Richardson?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, our first order of business is item nine. You'll see on the agenda, we do have meeting minutes, they're not quite ready, and we'll address those in the next meeting. So we'll go on to item nine. And this is an application extension request for Block 12, 702, Lot 45, 162 Basking Ridge Road, application number 23-09P. I guess, is there?
Would you like to tee off, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please summarize where we are with this application.
So with this one, we, we received a letter from the attorney for this, this was Fred Zelli, representing Robert and Eva Nyes. I'm not pronouncing that correctly. They received minor subdivision approval from the board back in uh... I'm sorry, pull the date from here. Oh, they received it back on October 24th, 2023. The letter we received from their attorney on July 15th, they requested an extension of the 190-day filing period. That's the time you have between approval. And you have 190 days to record your final deed or plat before your subdivision expires, right? The board is empowered via the MLUL to grant extensions, basically, it seems to me, in perpetuity, for so long as the applicants are being held up by trying to get outside of approval. So in this case, they're being held up by the Morris County Planning Board. They stated that they're having some kind of, some kind of issue with negotiating with them. As to what that is, I couldn't tell you specifically. But I would just also note, in the, in the letter, they requested a quote, "extension of 60 days from the date of the resolution", which to me made no sense because you had 190 days anyway from the resolution. So I spoke with, with Fred Zelli this morning about this whole topic, and he requested that the extension be granted to November 9th of this year. I also sent Deb a resolution I put together earlier today. I don't know if she was able to circulate that or not in time, but um, I do have that, so. I mean, theoretically, Mr. Chairman, the board can vote on the extension this evening, and then just memorialize the resolution at the next meeting, if no one had a chance to review it yet.
Well, first, are there any questions with regards to the extension request from the board?
Only question I have is there, are there any changes in that resolution that we need to call out?
Um, I didn't, they didn't state there were any...
It's only a date change or a time change?
It's just a, it's not even a change, it's just, it's an extension of time to, to file the subdivision deed. If they don't do it within 190 days, which would have been, which already passed, which was May 22nd, then you are able to seek these post facto, so even after it expires on paper, you could still seek an extension after the fact. Yeah, they would have had until May 22nd, you know, just by right, to record the deed, otherwise they're gonna, their approval would have expired. So essentially, if you don't grant the extension, their approval is completely expired. They could always refile an application if you want to let them do that, but you know...
So we're actually grandfathering back to May 22nd?
Essentially.
And then it's going to expire November 9th?
Correct.
Is that the date I heard?
Correct. It's a 171-day extension, that's what I calculated.
Do you think that's, I know they asked for that date, but do you think that's short?
Well, I mean, well, they, they were supposed to have this done in May. And we got this letter from Fred back in July. Again, I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me what that 60-day window he was requesting, but...
Like 45 days over.
Right, right. Right, exactly. So as of today, it would be 60 days to November 9th, actually.
And would they be permitted to seek another extension if they've not resolved this issue with...
Correct, yes, Mr. Chairman. As I was just kinda touching on previously, you can seek these extensions in perpetuity, for so long as they're being held up by somebody outside of their control from an outside agency, and they're diligently pursuing that approval. Right? So if they just like sit on their hands, they don't do anything for a year, that's not diligently pursuing it, in which case you would have no, you know, they'd have no grounds for an extension.
So in that vein, do we typically seek documentation of the issue? You mentioned that you don't know what the issue is that's holding them up. Is that something that we should be seeking more information about in order to continue to extend?
As a matter of, as a matter of practice, I've seen it go both ways, where a lot of boards are very laissez-faire, and somebody just requested an extension.
Okay, no, just more procedural question.
Well, to quote the letter, he said, and I'm quoting this, "Due to extended, extended negotiations with the Morris County Planning Board, the 190-day deadline set forth by NJSA, et cetera, et cetera, for the recording of the subdivision deed has lapsed." So they're citing extended negotiations. I'm assuming, I neglected to bring a copy of the original resolution with me this evening, but I, I would assume that they were opening some kind of road... There was some kind of issue with the county road, I'm assuming, and they're trying to sort out some details, maybe with grading or running of utilities, something to that effect.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
So, do you grant the extension as long as the Morris County Planning Board doesn't make any amendments that's adverse to the original? Like, so when you grant the extension, is it just typically you're granting the 60 days, or is it subject to no material changes from the third party?
Well, with the, with the extension resolution, which you guys will see next month, the, there's a condition in here that says that this extension is subject to all the same conditions as the original approval. So if they wanted to amend it to a, you know, in a, what's the term, in a material way, let's say they somehow wanted to do three lots instead of two lots, I know that's an extreme example, they would obviously have to come back and, you know, reaffirm the approvals, and, well, not reaffirm, but get all new approvals.
Or just the configuration of the lots?
Right.
So when, if they say it's still two lots, but it's two lots that are now different sizes, right, because of the way the road that they want the access points to be, is that considered material?
I guess it depends, probably, yeah, more than likely, yeah. I mean, if it's an inch or two something.
You're right, I just mean like, you know, they, they don't want the two next to each other, so now all of a sudden they're shifting the line by feet.
Right, right. And I would...
Trying to get around a variance where there might be...
Something like that.
Yeah, trying to squeeze within the setbacks.
And more than likely, when they submitted the application, they showed on the plans where the right-of-way line would be, if it doesn't already exist. So, that's, yeah.
But at least they indicated some Morris County Planning Board.
And they indicated who was holding them up.
So at least, and it's another public body, so I feel a little bit more comfortable that whatever they say that...
Yeah, this is a very, I, we see this happen quite often with any most outside agencies.
Comfortable as long as it's no material change, like moving a lot line to change to accommodate a setback or something.
No, they, they would have to come back to the board if there was a material change in the application. This is purely just for the, that 190-day filing period, so I'm pushing that out.
So if I could summarize to make a motion to accept this extension request, condition upon review, I guess, of the resolution? That will be available in advance of the next meeting? How, how, I, I wanna, I wanna condition.
Just be a motion to grant the extension to November 9th, 2024, and then with the understanding that a resolution would be memorialized at the next meeting.
With no material changes.
Well, can't we, I mean, do we, do we need to wait until the next meeting to memorialize the resolution, or can't we do it now?
If everybody wants to, if I can pass it on the line, everyone wants to take a look.
Yeah, I don't remember if we passed it out in August or not, but...
I didn't have it done at that point.
Oh, okay, so it's very standard language for an extension.
Correct.
Does it hurt them if we don't do it now, in terms of?
As long as you grant it.
As long as you grant it, I don't think it does, but...
Exactly. Well, again, they could apply.
So it's, yeah, to you guys, but it's a very short...
I don't want to detract from anything else we have going on this evening, but I, if you wanna get started down at that end, move, work it down, come back and vote on it at the end of the meeting?
I feel like that's terribly inefficient, I mean, I would...
Just throw in a suggestion.
I'm, I'm comfortable, if the rest of the board's comfortable, to grant the motion to extend to November 9th, and we move on. Accept the language that sounds pretty standard.
Yeah, it was just the recording of a deed and going to the planning board, sounded like the planning board could change things, rather than just a procedural, yeah, the county planning board, rather than just a procedural motion to file something straight forward.
Okay, so we have that motion, is there a second?
Second.
So we're, let's carry it to September 24th.
I think it's a motion to grant the extension but then carry the adoption of the resolution to the next meeting.
Grant the extension but carry the, okay?
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Tom.
Yep.
Chairman.
Second?
Second by Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, okay. Okay, so this is the, this is the extension request granting. So Chairman Richardson?
Uh, yes.
Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Mr. Opelka?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good.
Thank you, Chris.
Of course.
Okay, next item is ordinance review, and I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing to report, just kidding. So the first one, we have three land use elements that we've, ordinances that we've reviewed, both Ms. Dill and Mr. Hand. First of all, I just wanna say thanks for the work that they've put in. We've met a couple times via video to, to work on this, and we've had very efficient meetings. And we'll also give an update on some of the things that we're working on that will be coming before this board, and also Deputy Mayor, you'll get a little bit of a head highlight of what's coming. And also wanna thank the, the board for their review and comments from the last series of meetings that we've had to discuss this. So the first thing up is Land Use 154.1 ordinance to amend fence height. Just to refresh everyone, this is changing the height of the fence to six feet, which is now along the lines of the code construction. And that was the only change to that, to that ordinance. So I guess I'll go to the group here. Any comments, any feedback, any other, anything else you want to discuss with regards to fences? And I'll go to my notes just to see if there was anything that was left over.
Like, like with any of these ordinance changes, the big concern I have is any ripple effect to other ordinances. Did someone do a check to see if that's pretty clean?
Great question, great question, Mr. Chairman, and yes, we do go looking at other ordinances, and that's tracked in my spreadsheet, to find out if there's an impact. Are we 100%? I'd like to say yes, in this, in this instance, I'm gonna say yes. But when we get into other ordinances that are more complicated, that do have trickle-down effects, then yeah, we're, we're gonna miss some, but we are trying to go through and diligently list those out. And I've shared some examples with you, Attorney, of how I try to go about that, right? So hopefully that format that I sent you is, is very helpful.
It's very easy to follow when, when putting this together, Mr. Johnson.
Efficiency, that's what we're trying to achieve here.
I appreciate that.
So...
Good. I'm sorry, there was, yeah, Tom.
Tom, could you just clarify Section D 5 on page two? Where fences are abutting paper street, what's the reasoning for that? And could we be getting ourselves in trouble?
B 5?
Yep, on page two. It's basically, T 5, yeah, T 5.
Delta 5. All right, fences located in the front yard areas, is that the...
For paper streets, basically, it's fences along paper streets.
All right, so this was existing.
Yeah.
This is existing language, so that's not something I changed or addressed.
Is it still required, though, I mean, in a review, shouldn't...
And what's the overall concern?
I'm not sure what it's saying, they're saying you can have a fence over six feet in your front yard if it abuts against a paper street, if the township engineer says we're not gonna do anything with the paper street?
Essentially, I think that's what it is.
Well, what happens in five years if they decide they're gonna do something with the paper street and you have a six-foot fence up?
Then it gets grandfathered, and it stays.
Is this something that we could get rid of the whole thing and not have to worry about it, and just keep it a four-foot fence in your front yard, whether it's along the paper street or not? I mean, it probably has, affects very few people, right? I mean, I can't...
So if you get rid of the 5, then you have no guidance on a paper street?
It would be just the same as if it were a regular street, I mean, it's still a...
Treated like a corner lot?
It would be treated like, that's...
And that means it's a four-foot fence, then, that's the max?
So ultimately, a cor, a lot that abuts a paper street, then it would become two front yards. So that would minimize where the property owner could put a fence, you know what I mean, like...
Okay, so we treat it as a corner lot?
Yeah. It's ultimately treated like a corner lot, with two front yards.
I find that more palatable myself, I don't know about others.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. How about anybody else, anybody else wanna weigh in on that suggestion?
What is it, what is it now?
So it's, well, the paper street now says, or the, the ordinance currently says that you, well, I guess with our change, it would go to a six-foot potential fence along a paper street. The frontage of that particular lot along a paper street could have a six-foot fence, with the changes that we're proposing from going from four to six.
And what is it today?
Four. Four.
Four.
And just reflecting back to the TC meeting about Valley Road and, and division and the line of sight issue, if you have a, a paper street that becomes a real street and there's a six-foot fence there, you have a line of sight issue, and then we're just gonna potentially...
I think that's theoretical, though, 'cause I think we've looked at all the paper streets, and we haven't determined any that we're gonna do anything with. They're all in flooded areas or backlots and stuff like that, so it's kinda like a theoretical that doesn't exist, as far as I can tell.
I, I know there's a paper street behind my house, there's a lot that I had, it's a flagstaff lot, one lot on the road and then a flagstaff behind, so you need a paper street to get to that second lot, unless they combine the lot and make one lot, I don't think that would happen. So there, there are going to be some streets, however few, there are some streets that will present that.
There are some in my neighborhood also.
Maybe it is in best interest to remove that sec, number five.
I don't know why it matters.
For whatever my opinion's worth, I think that makes a lot of sense, I mean...
To get rid of five?
It could have been at one point this was very powerful, and now it's, it's kinda outdated.
Right, that's what it seems.
Okay. Any other comments?
It seems kinda subjective, too, with the engineer getting involved and, you know, it seems to be too much subjectivity.
Could be a headache for someone else later on down the line.
And no plans to convert.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Retaining walls. Does anybody know if there's a requirement, if a retaining wall has to be designed by an engineer, if it's over a certain height? What is the height on that, three or four?
It says four.
I think it's four. I'd have to confer with Joe Fuch.
This is E 3 you're referring to?
I'm 99.9% sure that it's four feet, and that's, that's in the UCC, the Unit of Construction Code, too.
Now, is that, because some retaining wall, I know, we just put one up, and it went close to four, where it was just a dip in the existing ground. Is this requirement for the whole length of it, or if it goes over four feet for a foot?
It can be a small portion of it, so if you have a retaining wall that starts at maybe 18 inches and then goes up to four feet, you have to engineer that portion. If there are retaining walls, I think it's total of six feet, and then there's like, you know, steps in between them. There's a minimum distance between, this is all uniform construction.
Right, right, well, that's if you have walls, one behind you.
99.9% sure it's four foot in height that has to have an...
At any portion of that wall?
Any portion of that wall.
So even if the last step was four feet, the whole wall would have to be engineered, and it's, you can't have it over four?
I think that they look at mostly just that section, but...
Yeah, I mean, you would think, I'm not an engineer, honestly, but I would, my expectation would be that if you're gonna engineer one part of the wall...
You're gonna engineer the whole wall, right?
Yeah.
Normally, that's normally...
Yeah, 'cause you have to get to that point anyway, so you gotta, you know, do the background engineering just to get to that part, yeah.
We're not changing that part.
No, no, I'm just...
The height of the fence.
And then, I guess another question is what happens when a wall has like a lighted column? See a lot of walls, maybe three foot high with a two-foot column and a light on top of it. So does that count as a five-foot wall, is it a three-foot wall with columns?
A high post?
Or a post, a light post or some?
Like even on, there's one example on Mount, is it Mount? Morristown, you're going out this way, and as you come around the right, there's those posts on that one corner lot, as you kinda swing around it, and they, they're over four feet.
But the posts aren't supporting any columns?
It's not, it could be, it could be...
Those are purely decorative, yeah.
They are, they're ornate, for sure.
Or electrical, yeah. We have nothing in the ordinance that specifies, you know, they can't have, I, I think the standard for those, for building, there is a standard in UCC, and I think it's two by two maximum, something like that?
For a column?
Per column.
A column is a part of the wall, though, I mean, if the wall starts to lean, the columns are gonna lean also, they're not independent.
Right, I'd have to check with the construction to see what the height is. I know that they have to get an electrical permit, especially if they're putting lighting in it.
Right.
Oh, really?
That, 'cause it basically requires that you're digging up portions of, you know, the property to connect electrical.
So just going back to, sorry.
Sorry, so just to address that, right, we're talking about a six-foot fence, and they will have six-foot posts to anchor the fence piece, right? They're gonna be the six-foot posts. We're not changing wall heights, we're not changing retaining walls, we're not doing any of that.
Okay.
And the light fixture, we weren't addressing that. But if that is something that we wanna revisit, I'm happy to take notes, I'm happy to go back and then work on those elements of it. We're not addressing those, we're just addressing the fence height for the, to stay with the construction code.
And the retaining wall heights?
We're not doing anything with the retaining...
Right, 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 we're keeping it as it is.
That's correct.
Should it say something in there that if it's over a certain height, it should be designed by an engineer?
For a fence?
For retaining wall.
That's in code.
In code, okay.
Yeah, that's in the UCC.
Yeah, it's already covered by that.
I mean, you could reference something, you know, you know, confirm with, you know, the construction department or something to that effect, but I wouldn't put the specifics...
Again, are you addressing the fence, or are you addressing...
Retaining walls.
Back on retaining walls, okay. So I'm happy to take the retaining wall piece back and away and work on that, and I can always play back the suggestions from the video to see what we need to do with that, and then come back and refine the retaining wall piece. But I am anxious to get the fence piece over the line to get that going. So I'm just gonna bring the conversation back. So anything you want me to address on the retaining wall, please, send me an email. I will be happy to go in and take a look at that. And then we can go with the ORC group, and we will then talk about that aspect of this ordinance.
So I just have quick questions or clarification. Does this pertain to residential and commercial properties, or just residential properties?
For the retaining walls, or all of them?
For the fence.
Does the fence refer to, is it just residential?
It's just residential. Because any, any commercial property that wants to put a fence up has to come for a site plan, that's a minor site plan application on a commercial property. So basically, on a commercial property, you as the board and a minor site plan application would be deciding... So basically, on a commercial property, you as the board and a minor site plan application would be deciding if they want a four-foot, a six-foot, eight-foot fence, yeah.
Can we, I want to go back to the six-foot fence, so the intent of that is for side yards, privacy between neighbors, right?
Side and rear, yeah.
Side and rear, so in the case of the paper streets, generally, these paper streets divide neighbors, right? They can't be vacated, at the point in which they would be vacated, then a six-foot fence would be okay along them.
Correct.
And so, I'm back to that, and I think we should err on the side of treating them like side yards up until the point that they're, something's done with them, and the chances that anything's going to be done with any of these paper roads is next to zero. Having gone through them with Dennis pretty extensively, we did a review of the paper streets and wanted to see if we could just vacate all of them, there's just so many corner cases that it's just not going to happen. But essentially, right now, paper streets are side yards between neighbors, and so I understand the arguments for making it four feet and treating them like frontage, but I would argue the other way, that they should be treated like side yards.
Then the question would be what happened, who takes over ownership of the property once the streets are vacated?
When the streets are vacated, it's split evenly between the two residents.
So then theoretically, then you would have a six-foot fence in your front yard inside, and you could actually move it to whatever the right-of-way, twenty-five feet, you would gain twenty-five feet of property. So you might want to wait to put up the fence in.
I think there's instances in town that where people are looking for the privacy now.
Yeah, good point.
So, anyway, I'll lay that out there.
So just to play it back, for paper streets, the side where the paper street is, you want to treat that as side lot as opposed to a corner lot? In those instances where those instances exist.
In the instance where there is, there's a clear front lot along the street and then there's this side paper street, which generally is going nowhere, or down to the river, right? Treat them for what they are essentially right now, they're side lots.
Side lots. Would you want me to kind of rethink D and come back again?
Yeah.
Okay.
So keep him five?
I could, I could make, and I know, Chris, you could tell me, I mean, what if we put language in for paper streets that if somebody comes to, you know, to want an eight, a six-foot fence along a paper street side? Should we get, should I, as the zoning officer, reach out to the township committee and confirm that that particular paper street has no, you know, isn't being vacant or used or anything, I mean, you know where I'm going with that? Do we get permission or do I, as the zoning officer, get permission from the TC to say, yes, we're okay with them putting it at six-foot fence on that entire line, instead of treating it like a corner lot?
It sounds like the analysis has already been done, right, Scott?
Yeah, yeah, I can think of one instance in particular where there's a paper street, which is really just an access road for the water company.
Norwood?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Norwood, down there.
And actually, the gentleman on Norwood, he just, I gave him permission for a six-foot fence along that entire line.
Right, right, okay, there you go.
That's a good example.
On the south side of his property?
Yes.
Okay.
On the paper street side, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So why don't we just leave it as is, then?
Is that a paper street or an access easy?
Well, we, Tom, just.
It's a paper street.
I'm okay with whatever.
What's, what's written here, does that help you in that example?
Paper street, but it's used.
It does.
Because it defines what a paper street's, everything else.
For zoning purposes, properties that abut a paper street are considered corner lots. But because this is written in here, that does help the property owner if they want to put, so they don't have to put a four-foot fence around.
Yeah, I just think with, for what this is.
Can I go back to my six-foot fence?
Yeah. Is that okay, Tom, I just?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So in the fourth whereas clause, where it says, ensuring the requirements of ordinance consistent with on the grounds of condition, Norwood minimizes cost of township residents associated with minor single-family home renovations. So if it's residential, we also permit multifamily in residential zones, right? So if it's a two-family home, like a duplex, I think that just that wording there, it should just be take out minor or single-family home and just say township residents associated with renovations, right?
Because that way.
Take out single family.
Wait, let me, let me speak to that, so that's, when you're passing any kind of land use ordinance, any ordinance, for the most part, they're held to the arbitrary capricious or unreasonable standard, so there has to be a basis for you passing this ordinance, right? So the fourth whereas clause is an attempt to say, hey, we have a legitimate planning purpose behind this ordinance?
Yeah.
And I'm quoting directly from the master plan in that little section there, so it doesn't say, you know, that's exactly what it says, minor, single-family home renovations. So I'm trying to tie this ordinance to back to the master.
Totally, I'm just saying, I think that sometimes just taking out those phrases makes it a little bit easier when people pick it up later on, right? Because if somebody looks at it and goes, oh, they're, well, they're just trying to reduce the cost for a single-family.
Right.
Things, right, like, obviously, it doesn't affect any of the actual land use ordinance, it's just kind of making it more clear that the ordinance, things in that way, so it's just wordsmithing more than anything.
Well, the thing is, I'm borrowing the language from the master plan, if the master plan, the master plan says specifically that they're, you know, it's intended to minimize the cost of township residents associated with minor, single-family home renovations. So if I change it up, then I'm not, it's not the master plan.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, just to ask.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just very quickly, so just, just so it's clear, because on that same section, requirements of UCC, so are we confident, then, that this language?
I pulled it directly from the UCC.
B, this B is language, though, I just want to make sure, so when it goes to the township committee, they can follow along without double.
Right, that actually leads me to a question for the board, actually, so if you look at that language, it says, you know, construction permits should be required for fences six feet or more in height. And two, fences of any height surrounding public or private swimming pools, conforming with the height limits the same, yada, yada, yada. So the UCC specifically states, you know, public and private swimming pools, is that something you want to include in this revision or, because I believe swimming pool fences are otherwise regulated by another portion of the ordinance, so I don't, you know, it's kind of up to you, do you want, it might be somewhat redundant to include it in here, but at the same time, you're really mirroring the language of the UCC, so it's, you know, I guess reasonable lines could differ, but ultimately, it's not going to, I mean, it's going to cause any problems to keep it in, but.
Well, we, I didn't mind it because we referred to it in three, D three, about swimming pools, so it just ties it back for me.
I'd keep it.
Okay.
I thought it was fine.
All right, yeah, I just wanted, just wanted.
Yeah, no, I thought it was fine.
Keep, that's going to stay.
Yeah, we're going to keep that, yeah.
Okay, so we're back to just the six-foot, right?
As, as written.
As written.
So, so there's no changes, I think we need to make.
No, there's any changes.
Okay, all right, so we're good.
There's a lot of markers, but then I crossed out my markers.
Yeah.
So what's the next step on the fence ordinance?
So do we need to make a motion and vote?
We'll make a motion, and I think we can do it by all in favor.
Yeah, you do it.
Yeah, we'll do a motion a second and an all in favor to have the board secretary forward the, this ordinance to the township committee for their consideration.
Okay.
Couldn't have said it better myself, Scott, could you?
Can I get a motion?
So moved, second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Make it happen. All right, first one, sending up to you.
Two hundred.
To Guy, all right. Yeah, only two hundred to go. All right.
How do you eat, how do you eat an elephant, right, one piece at a time?
One peanut at a time. All right, so the next one up is LU one five five dot four permitted signs, if you recall, there was the application that came before us about having a signage, a home office signage, and it was a two-foot by two-foot equals a four-square-foot sign that could be posted outside the residence. After much conversation, we finally settled on one-foot by two-foot sign, and that was the adjustment. I know we kicked around eight inches by sixteen, and then the chairman brought in a show and tell cue card, one, one by two, and everybody settled in on that. So I think it's easier to just go one foot by two foot, that's the only change to this portion of the ordinance.
Did you want to just, just do two square feet instead of give a dimension?
Two square feet, no.
That's why I, I think you're better with two square feet.
Somebody might adjust it at eight inches by whatever is the maximum of two square feet.
I agree.
I thought that's where we were going.
I thought we.
Because you don't know how the, you might want to do that sign.
You may want to do the eighteen inches by six inches or something.
You don't want every sign to be a square.
You can't go past twenty-four inches and you can't go past twelve inches high or twenty-four inches wide.
Okay, well, that would be another way to write it, then.
Can't exceed one foot in height, can't exceed two feet in length.
There you go, there's your, that's a short version of twelve inches and twenty-four inches.
Exactly, yeah, you just can't go beyond.
Yeah.
One by two, you have to put Jones or Malinowski, you have any different dimensions.
So I can't have, I can't have, I can't have a three-inch sign by.
That's right.
Right, by six feet.
Do I have to put in no bezel?
Right. That's fine, then, I'm, I'm fine personally, then, because it follows on from the same sort of math as before.
Yeah, so that's the only change, one by two, we're not putting a bezel in and so forth.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Specifically prohibited lit signs?
Listen, talk about uplighting or lit, I don't recall seeing.
That's in another.
That's in another ordinance.
Yeah, that's, I think, I think there's no lighting for, you know.
I don't remember reading anything about lighting in here.
But I'll, I'll take, I'll take that action way as to review.
Maybe de-specific.
Do you have concern about light signs?
Yeah.
For residential.
If it's not specifically prohibited, one will show up.
Right, but, but for commercially, I mean, you can't really, that's for a commercial property, so in that zone. So I would suggest, and, and a lot, you know, I think that a lot of people in a residential zone, especially if they are allowed to have a residential business, you know, they could use, you know, an uplit garden sign that they put around their own gar, you know, garden light.
I've seen backlit glass doctor signs.
Right.
I mean, I would say, right, I've, I've seen mostly just ground signs, very similar to landscape lighting that's allowed for uplight, that's it.
Oh, from going up, just projected up?
And I, I do think you should include that verbiage in with this ordinance.
Do you think so, instead of having it separate?
If you have very specific, you know, thoughts about what's allowed, include it, for sure.
So not illuminated inherently?
Not the sign illuminated, maybe one uplit landscaping.
Okay, I'll take that away, so we will not pass this ordinance today, I will, I will review the code, see what is said about lights and lighted signs in residential zones, if that's even addressed, if it's not addressed, then we will come back with an amendment.
I, I think, I mean, I'd have to go look at the ordinance, I was trying to pull it up real quick, the fact, I mean, this is, one fifty-five point four is permitted sign, so everything in here is permitted, therefore, if it's not in this list, presumably, it's not permitted, so.
So that would be the assumption.
That's the assumption, but I haven't reviewed anything yet, but I'm trying to pull it up.
Yes, the old double negative.
Yeah, trying to save you some extra work, Tom, again.
Appreciate that.
But if, 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 if you think that this is something that should be.
Oh, okay, but it's not.
I do, I think it should be absolutely directed, and the only reason I say that, because if it's not listed, then we consider it strictly prohibited, but if somebody were to do it like a landscaping, like, you know, like they do their landscaping lighting, I don't know that.
So what's the view from everyone here?
Good, I got some, the next section, one fifty-five point five, prohibited signs, any sign not specifically permitted by this ordinance is prohibited. Following signs and design enhancement features are unlawful and specifically prohibited. A is marquee signs, as we've seen, that kind of touches on electronic, I don't know what a snipe sign is, never heard of that one before, abandoned signs, I'm just going to list them off. Vehicular signs, mechanical movement signs, including revolving signs, electronic message board signs, pennant strings, inflatable devices, signs and streamers, and animated signs, I think that kind of covers a lot of that. Signs that prevent free ingress or egress from any door, window, or fire escape, signs which emit smoke, visible vapors, particulate, particulate matter, sound, odor, or contain open flames. All fences signs, portable signs, sequential signs, roof signs, billboard signs, temporary signs, except those permitted by section three dash twelve, signs erected without the permission of the property owner, with the exception of those authorized or required by local, state, or federal government. And any sign containing information which states or implies that a property may be used for any purpose not permitted under the provisions of the long-held township's.
So the action I hear is that Tom Jones is going to be going away to the ordinance review committee, the ORC, and we will be amending one fifty-five point five to discourage lighted signs.
Right, if that's already, yeah, subsumed within there.
That's good, I will, I will take that as an action, not a problem, so with regards to ordinance one fifty-five dot four, any other comments?
So can I put a flag of my business up, as long as it's not greater than twenty-four square feet?
If you get, if you get permission to have.
Flags and emblems are, are permitted in all zones, flags, emblems, or other insignia of, of.
Of a nation, state capitol.
That no more than one flag should be permitted for each un, and that no such display exceeds twenty-four square feet in area. So if I put a flag of my business up instead of putting the sign up, based on the way that it's worded?
Looks like it.
Well, hang on a second, a, a business, because you're pointing out the business aspect.
Municipality school business.
Business part, the business.
So let's say I don't want a one-by-two sign, I want to put a four-by-six flag up, can I do that, based on the way that this is working?
So, so just to throw a wrinkle in, has anyone driven down Plainfield over here by ShopRite, what road is that? That heads out of town towards Wachung, Warren, anybody see the signs that are hanging from the trees?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But would you?
That's not in our town, by the way.
No, but is, is, do you think business subtlety here, home office versus business?
And that's, I don't know the difference, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think it's worth.
I don't know if, let's say, the home office sign is now shrunk to one by two, that I can say that it's a business and it says permitted in all zones, so that should supersede the fact that it's a home office, if I'm reading.
Well, take, yeah, what takes, what takes precedence?
That's what I'm trying to just understand, is what's the, the word for?
Yeah, business, business, I guess, could be interpreted to be.
Oh, it's, I think it's very good to clarify, because you don't really have any definitions.
Yeah, I think it's very good, because if, yeah, business, if people start equating home office to a business, then it's going to be a lot of places.
Well, but here's, here's what I would say in the caveat of that, is that when somebody, based on our code, if you are running your business from your home.
Yeah.
You have to come to the board to have a home business, correct? Once you do that, then you're subject to the regulations under the, of having a home business, which then leads you to that part of the sign ordinance where it says you can only have, so it automatically excludes you from having a flag, I mean, that would be my thing.
It goes to the one by two.
I think we have to be sure here that there's.
I would actually, the way that I would approve, that I flip, right, is that I might say that I have a business, and I'm not putting a sign up, because the sign is.
Too small.
Too small.
Right.
So I think that the way around it is, after business, putting a bracket and saying, you know, excluding home office or something along those lines where.
I had a suggestion at this point, the last sentence of one fifty-five point four B, it says, these regulations shall not apply to flags of the United States of America, set in the period, comma, or to permitted home office uses.
Right.
And then you're accepting that completely.
So, so that, that would be the clarification that takes out the fact that they can put a four-by-six flag up.
All right, so you'll send me the revision?
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we still move forward with the motion with that revision?
Yeah, it's a simple six words.
What is J?
Can you explain J, vending machine signs in residential areas?
Signs shall be permitted in all.
Car wash, there's vending machine signs on.
Like Pepsi, you know, beverage displays or?
Or the fact that you want to get a towel or you want to get, you know.
An air freshener or something.
Yeah, air freshener, all those sort of signs on the front side of, of the car wash.
ATM is, ATM machine is over here.
Yeah, like that, that's kind of how I look at it.
But isn't this residential area?
It's a non-residential.
It's a non-residential.
So, yeah, it says the following signs are permitted in all res.
All non-residential.
The ordinance is about residential home offices, right?
No, just that particular subsection G applies to home office.
Correct, it calls it out. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the change for LU one fifty-five dot four permitted signs, the change to G is now one foot by two foot, one foot height by two foot length sign. As well as the amended six words to section B, one fifty-five dot four.
Wait, did you want to review lighting with this one?
No, I'm going to look at that one for one fifty-five dot five.
Okay, my fault.
In the next one.
Got you.
When you said the six words.
Can you read the six words out loud? Can you read the six words out loud for me?
Here, sure, absolutely, um, so I'll just read the whole sentence, uh, subsection B, on, on the bottom of the page, bottom of the first page. Last sentence there, these regulations shall not apply to flags of the United States of America, or to permitted home office uses. That's the suggested language, or to permitted home office uses. Sounds good?
Thank you.
And then is the word, cause you used the word maximum one by two. Is that word in there? Cause I don't wanna.
Shall not exceed, we use a different, we use a different.
Perfect, okay.
Thesaurus. We'll have fun doing this, alright?
Okay.
So, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor? Thank you.
Very good.
Two in the book.
Put it out.
Tom, do you want me to send you copies of these first before I send it to Deb to send to the D C?
No, if you send it to.
Just.
P P on C C, and I'll take, P, if I've got any issues, I'll come right in over the top.
Okay, sounds good.
I usually include, like, but when I send it to the D C, I will include the board chair and vice chair, so it will both be included.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so the less contentious one that we're about to, uh, talk about is, uh. LU.
I have the wrong code, it's one thirty-four point, on the agenda, I have the wrong code.
Yeah, so it's LU one thirty-four point four and LU one thirty-four point seven?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, so this is, talks about residential sheds. And it is, the, uh, attempt was to increase from one hundred to two hundred square foot sheds. There was, uh, talk about, um, reviewing sheds, trying to determine height. Trying to determine maximum size, uh, taking into consideration small lots versus larger lots. Uh, and setbacks, there was the conversation around, uh, what if you have a privacy fence? Can you not have the shed, uh, closer, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh, privacy fence, a six foot fence? There was also conversation around making sure that there's egress around, uh, a primary structure with a, with a large shed on it. Uh, on the property, uh, which was actually covered in, uh, in accessories. It's not accessory, what is the accessory building? Is that what it's called? Yeah.
Yes.
So it was covered in accessory building, and I'll, I'll call out those LU's here in, in a second. There was one other item that someone had brought to my attention. Oh, numbers of sheds on the properties versus small, uh, small lots versus large lots. What we don't wanna see is sewing ha- someone having fifteen sheds in their backyard. We don't wanna see that, but we definitely wanna make sure that people can store their lawn equipment, their, uh, summer, um, picnic stuff. Toys, whatever, uh, in an appropriate sized shed, uh, on the property, without making it look like they have small homes back there. We did have some language, uh, that we put forward that only electric, uh, to be run to the building, no plumbing, um. No, uh, there was something else.
Sewer.
No sewer connection, thank you very much.
You can't live in, you can't live in, you can't live in this shit.
From the top of my head. This is my version. Yes, um, so no sewer, no running water, uh, the, uh, no residential shed shall be used. As a residential occupancy or storage for automobiles, i.e. cars, trucks, and vans. Uh, you'll see that in the other version if you look at the top, it says Tom Jones on it.
Yeah.
And that's the one.
One of yours, Tom.
Yep, uh, I made some other, um, grammatical, uh, uh, changes. And, uh, Tom Malinowski also brought to my attention, um, the ability to run cable for. So if you have a TV there and you wanna have connection to an internet, because you need to go to YouTube to figure out how to fix something that you're working on in your shed. And you don't wanna have like a wifi push to get all the way out there, and you cannot reach it because it's all the way in the back of your, uh, your lot. So, if you can run cable out there, or you can run electric out there, you can run cable out there. So, I'm considering adding the cable piece too. So, we're not going, I don't think we're gonna agree on this today, maybe we will. But the things that I need to, to understand from this group is, so, the first item, uh, subsection A. Each property shall be limited to, uh, one residential shed if the property, uh, contains a maximum. And I need to understand what is that square footage, what is that lot size? And then two residential sheds if a property contains a minimum of X number square foot on the property. So, I haven't found the sweet spot, uh, where that line is. I tried to look at zones to see if that was the way to limit, because we know we have some zones that have small lots, and then some zones that have big lots. But we have some zones that have both kinds of lots, so I'm trying to find that sweet spot, and I'm not there yet.
Two acres.
Huh?
Two acres.
Two acres?
What does that?
Okay, so that means I only get one shed. Hundred square, hundred foot shed, back to a hundred feet.
Hundred square, that there's a starting point, if any.
Yeah.
Too low, too high, what does, what do people think?
Way too high.
Too high?
I think quarter, quarter acre property, maybe that's a one shed. And then anything exceeding a quarter acre, we can have two sheds.
No, a quarter acre is not law. That's, at least an acre, at least an acre before you go to.
I would say a half acre, two sheds.
So a half acre.
But what's, okay, what's?
And I'm gonna be honest with y'all, I don't think, I, I, so you have the residential zones, and then you have, like, just take for instance, the conservation zone. In the conservation zone in town, the minimum lot size is three acre. Okay, um, three acres, and if, oh, you allow single family residential, then you allow some farming. In my opinion, as the zoning officer, I think that should be the only zone that you're allowing two sheds if they want two sheds.
I agree.
I think for the rest of the residential, I mean, yes, you do have some larger properties, but on the, uh, otherwise. Again, sheds are a big topic in my office, so I hear complaints, you know, oh, they put, I mean, listen, it's a shed. I think that only three acres or more should be allowed to have two sheds. Based on the zones that we have in town.
Three acres or more, I think they wanna bar.
So, but, but then the other, so you could have, you could have a less than, uh, three acres, right? But I wa- I'm allowed to have two hundred square foot shed, but I don't want one shed, I want two one hundred foot sheds.
Well, technically, you, they're allowed to have as big a shed as they want. We have to decide what the setbacks are gonna be for what size of shed, we have to decide what the dimensions, the height. So technically, and again, U C C calls out that anything over two hundred square feet, they gotta get construction permits. So whether that homeowner, that property owner decides to build a four hundred square foot shed, or a two thousand square foot, uh, pole barn. On a property that's two acres, that's their choice, so there's options for them, do you know what I mean?
So we're trying to find the trigger point in which they would come before the board, right, to control this whole situation.
Can I, can I, can I?
You don't want us to do it in, sorry.
So the purpose of the sheds is to store stuff you need to take care of your property. Are we allowing them to put riding tractors in these sheds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's the size of a property where a person likely would want to have or need a riding tractor? In addition to all the other tools that they use to maintain their property?
So my wife's gonna kill me, but, what I'm about to say is, but I'm just under an acre, and I would love to have a tractor, but I don't. I have a thirty-two inch wide walk behind mower.
I have a tractor, I have a tractor at point six six, and it's, I would say a half acre is just about right for a riding tractor. With the lock coverage requirements that we have.
That's where I'm at.
And you'd be hard pressed to get a riding tractor, and a weed whacker, and a leaf blower. And a place to store your gasoline, and a place to put your paint, and a place to put your tools. And a snow blower, and all that stuff in one shed. Now, you could be, build a big pole barn or a huge shed. Let people have a couple of sheds over half an acre, it totally makes sense.
But what size sheds?
Well, that gets.
I think that's, for me, that's.
That's the next, that's the next.
I know, but I think you gotta address that before you go to the.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just answering the.
So half acre seems like might be a trigger point.
Yeah.
And now we're talking about how many sheds and what size should these sheds look like, right? So if you have, so, so if you want two sheds, right, say your, your property's over a half an acre, you wanna put two sheds on it. I have proposed one two hundred, one three hundred, that's it, maximum. Or you stay with the two hundred, and you can have two one hundred sheds, one hundred square foot sheds. That's something for us to kick around.
So what's a one hundred shed, is that, let's do a, what's, what's a hundred divided by?
Ten by ten.
Ten by ten.
Ten by ten.
That's a big shed.
That's not a big shed if you have a riding mower and a snow blower.
I do. If you're gonna have multiple sheds, then you keep it limited to anything under two hundred.
You're not gonna get like a lawn tractor though into anything less than twelve by ten.
Right. Twelve by, you mean twelve by eight or twelve by ten?
Twelve by, I'm sorry, twelve by eight.
Twelve by eight.
Mine, mine must be ten by eight or twelve, and I have a tractor, innit?
Yeah. It has to do with how wide they have to be to have the doors wide enough to.
From the, the very top, Chris, residential zoning district, is a conservation zoning residential zoning district?
I believe so, and one of the, one of the permitted uses are, are residences, farms too, I guess, right?
Primary use is, is, is single family residence.
So is residential zoning district defined earlier as these particular zones in the, the ordinances? Or are we just saying that anywhere people are allowed to live is a residential zoning district?
I find that's a good question.
They're defined as conservation, R two, R three, and R four.
So they are defined.
And there's some R five, yes, they are defined.
So they're defined specifically earlier on, okay.
Okay, good. Not, not in this particular section.
No, no, there's another.
Right, so it would just be capitalized to make sure that when somebody refers.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
And there are, at, at, in the end of the land use ordinance, like in part of land use, there's what we call the bulk standards, which I'm sure you've all seen. Where there's a chart that calls out in every zone, you know, what the standards are, the minimum lot size. You know, the, the maximum, you know, and a lot of these, a lot of these properties too, have, what, I'm sorry. What generally triggers a variance, especially for a shed, is either the setback or impervious coverage. Because in some of the smaller lots, even if you're deciding to allow two sheds on a smaller lot, anything over a half acre. We still have the issue of impervious coverage, they have to meet that impervious coverage in that zone.
And they can get around that by putting the rocks underneath?
I think there's a fifty percent on that.
Or is there a ma- is there an equation that's calculated for that?
There's a calculation for decks and for sheds.
But they don't get the full credit?
Correct.
Okay.
So this may be a dumb question, but when you're calculating that impervious coverage, is also roofline, or is it also?
Drip line.
So it is the drip line?
Uh, I'd have to confirm with Joe, cause I don't speak engineering.
Everything says, everything says drip line.
Just, so it's just clarification for.
Cause we're gonna come to that in a minute.
You're right, and that's why I was just wondering exactly, because, you know, if you have a, uh, ten foot high and you've got really wide, you know.
White carpet.
I think you're, I think you're right, I think it's a drip line, because from the zoning perspective, if you have an overhang, that's where I'm calculating it from.
Right.
So eliminate.
It's not like a little porch, does porch count towards the eight by twelve, right?
Covered?
Sure, it's covered, but.
It's a drip line.
Well.
So it's a drip line, so it's a coverage issue, but I could have an eight by twelve that goes out another four feet that I've got in a little like patio sitting on it, right?
No, that, that's counted.
So that's counted as part of the shed, even if it's open air.
Yeah.
That's, that's good to clarify.
Yeah.
That, so let's go, go with that, so is, is it the drip, the drip line is the ten by, the hundred square?
For, oh, for the shed.
Yeah. Is it, should we, can we use that as our gauge?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, I like that.
I think we should confirm with Joe, these lots, based on the current, the way that's written with the, because right now, the, the focus for a shed is based on. The gravel under, you know, the, what's underneath the shed, and how far out you take the, the gravel or whatever it is. So I think we should just confirm with.
Yeah, you know, and I, I questioned the eight inches of gravel.
Nobody does that.
That's a lot, and, and, you know, it's, there's, is it clean gravel, is it Q P, you know, what, you know. It's too amorphous as to what we're doing there, so we should take that up with Joe too. Alright, so we're on shed sizes, you wanna talk briefly about that?
Yeah, so it sounds like the trigger point is half acre, right?
And, and that would be twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet would be for your square footage.
Half acre.
Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet would be a half acre.
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty feet.
Is that one more time?
Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet is a half acre.
That's my apology.
But hang on a second, hang on a second, so how many shed, half acre is a, is.
One shed.
One shed.
So over, over a half acre.
Over half acre is?
Two sheds.
Two sheds.
Two sheds, that's, that's a lot. In my opinion, that's a lot.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I'm not sold on two sheds, I would rather see it done with size.
Right.
I'd rather see one structure with bigger size, and I think that's where you're heading.
Okay.
In the second part, but, that's just my opinion.
Here's what I would say about that, though, the limiting factor here is gonna be the setback. And the lock coverage.
Right.
And, um. I think it would, it's advantageous if, if folks are splitting that, um, storage up over a couple of different areas.
Then have it one, and, oh, bigger structure.
One way you could say this, right, to, to, you know, kind of address what you're saying is, have an aggregate area. Over a half acre, an aggregate area of shed space that can be divided between up to two sheds.
I was just gonna suggest.
I like that word.
And, and you could do like two hundred and fifty square feet drip line.
Right.
Right?
Is there any, would the board consider taking out, giving a credit for sheds under impervious coverage altogether? Because from my perspective, and, uh, again, I could have Joe opine on this too, but, um. Like you said, eight inches of crushed stone is virtually impossible, it creates a situation where we have to go, you know, out and check it. I personally think, based on, you know, being in this town and the impervious coverage issues that we see. I, I personally think that sheds should absolutely always be considered in impervious coverage, and there should be no. I can understand giving a credit for a deck, based on the way a deck is built, and, you know, spacing of boards and whatnot. But in my personal opinion, I would rather see any credit for impervious removed from sheds altogether.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially if you're doing two sheds.
I, I disagree, I think any water that falls onto the roof of a shed goes into the ground from the drip line. And if you have crushed stone, it's impervious, it's not like you're putting in a gutter and taking it out to the curb line, or into a well or anything. It's into the ground. I think they deserve a credit for that.
And it's really for the smaller lots, where that credit would be really asked for.
Where it's gonna matter.
Where you're also, uh, if you have a six foot fence, you get to move that shed closer to the fence.
Right, but. Your position of the shed on your lot doesn't change the coverage.
No, it doesn't change, no, it doesn't change, no, it doesn't change coverage, that's correct.
Alright, so you're suggesting for smaller lots to get the credit?
I think everybody should get the credit, I think everybody should.
What about if the property?
I mean, unless you have gutters on your shed and you're making, you know, downspouse or. Collecting the water or something, it, that water, rainwater is going into the ground.
You, you get a credit if you have a rain barrel.
Then you have to worry about mosquitoes and everything else.
So, so Deb, go back over your reasoning for it to be no credit?
Be, I mean, no matter what zone we're talking about. No matter what type of construction. People do, whether it's a small shed, even a generator, we've had complaints about water runoff. Water runoff, water is the biggest, as everyone knows, is the biggest issue in this town. So, to eliminate a neighbor's concerns. I mean, I highly think that, that's, I mean, that's really my, my main concern, again, I don't really speak engineering. So I, I, I can't give you a logical engineering reason for it. I, I can only say that the majority of sheds that we see do not adhere to an eight inch standard of gravel. Because that's a lot, like, like, some of the members have said, it's, it's a lot.
Because.
So they have to be inspected.
Yeah.
We'd have to inspect.
Yeah, mine was.
We, we currently do not inspect it, it, and because it's just not something that people do. They usually put it on a concrete pad, or some sort of, you know, pad, not a gravel pad.
Generators.
Yes, very similar to a generator, right, um, but, on the flip side of that too, I would say to you that, you know, if. a property is in a flood plain or a flood zone, according to our map or a FEMA map, right? And our map is outdated, because it's from two thousand and fourteen, as we all know, FEMA has raised the, the DDP, and that FEMA has raised the flood plain from the last several years of storms. I would say that, you know, if, maybe we should put some language in also that includes if you're in a flood plain, you only get one shed. Because anything generally in a flood plain has to be cleared by the DEP anyway.
Yeah.
Like an addition or impervious coverage. Um, if you wanna allow them to have a shed, sure, you know, it's not really, but it, it's just the water issue is such a big issue, that's my concern.
I think that would complicate things.
Very well could, you're absolutely right.
Certainly.
But these are, these are my concerns about, from calls we hear on a regular basis from neighbors and runoff.
Just, just to jump forward a little bit here, just on this, when we talk about two hundred square foot shed potential, that starts to become quite a large catchment area for runoff. So, then do we start thinking about, that has to be properly, then you start talking characters, cause that could runoff to your neighbor's property quite easily.
And you can get two, right, so you're talking, because there's also nothing in here that says I can't connect my sheds.
But, they will come to that, cause they will?
Right, so now I've got four hundred?
Well, there is an accessory struc, an accessory structure, there is language that says you have to have, I think, like, six feet.
Yeah, it has to be separated.
That is correct.
Yeah, there is, so there is something that says, so then you'd have to clarify that, if you're allowing two sheds, do you allow three feet? Do you allow?
Yeah.
But, but to be, to be very careful on this, we were just talking a second ago about aggregate area, not two hundred plus two hundred, right?
Yeah.
Right, counsel?
Yes, I'm sorry, I think?
We were talking about, if, if we're doing two sheds, we were talking about aggregate area between the two sheds.
Right, alright.
Right?
Yeah.
Like, setting some limit and saying between these two sheds, they add up to a maximum drip line?
Two hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was my thought, if you?
But, but if we have one that's two hundred square foot?
Well, think about that, right?
One, then, then you gotta start.
Ten by ten shed, that's a hundred and eighty square feet, I put two of them, that's three hundred and sixty square feet, or six feet apart. Technically, I can put an eight foot wide path.
Yeah.
Essentially connecting them, right, and if you're talking about the impervious coverage?
Path is included in impervious coverage.
It's pain.
So, now you're talking about you, a lot of the impervious coverage, which I think is coming full circle of?
So, so it sounds like we're only, we should only allow one shed.
No, I'm, I'm good with the aggregate, personally, I like that as, as a concept, and for me, this is all conversation for us to go back to, these are all good inputs, so not this, for me at least.
So, right, so?
I like the idea of aggregate, but in a half acre.
I think we could get Joe to opine on some of this too.
Yeah.
I think we need him, I mean, I think that's, we have to circle back.
On this issue specifically, I think it would be wise.
Especially with regards to this impervious coverage issue and?
I agree.
And how, and what, if, there could have been some logic behind the eight inch stone?
Absolutely.
As the amount of storage that was coming off of the hundred square foot shed, I, I don't know, I don't know where the eight inches came from.
Maybe, that may be even similar to a drywall ins, a drywall installation that's required for anything over a thousand square feet.
But, right now, I mean, somebody could put pea gravel down, i- i- it doesn't even specify the type of stone, is it three quarter inch stone?
Yeah, basically, it says any stone that you put down is considered impervious.
Is it saying a minimum of eight inches?
It says eight inches, does it say, I don't know if it says minimum, it just says eight inches.
Minimum, it says minimum.
Minimum, it doesn't really even?
Minimum of eight inches of crushed stone placed, placed under the structure.
And two feet beyond the drip.
Two feet beyond the drip line.
So? Okay.
Essentially, essentially what you're doing is creating a drywall underneath a shed.
Mm-hmm. Six feet is the minimum between.
Can, can I ask, just for an opinion from the bo, the board about the two hundred square foot? We talked about half an acre.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there some point where a two hundred square foot is too big for something?
Kind of the next, I think that's the next section.
Yeah, sorry, Tom, I'm talking.
Yeah? Okay, maximum permitted shed sizes on properties that contain a maximum, and we're gonna use the half acre, half acre square foot residential sheds shall not exceed one hundred square feet. So, one acre, I'm sorry, half acre, you get a hundred square foot shed on the property.
Yep.
Properties that contain greater than a half acre, uh, residential sheds shall not exceed two hundred square feet. After that, they go to construction if they wanna build something bigger than, than two hundred square feet.
Yeah, a barn or whatever, right?
That's right, yeah.
And I think two hundred square feet is too much for a half an acre or above. If I had point six of an acre to me, I have, I have one acre, right? If I put in a two hundred square foot shed, that's?
I would love gravel.
It's pretty much.
That counts as impervious coverage, right?
Well, apparently, according to the current code, if they're doing it eight inches deep of crushed stone?
It doesn't.
It does not, but gravel would, gravel and crushed stone, I don't know what the engineer would consider the difference between.
Right, but if you don't put it down, then?
Then it's considered?
The coverage is in, is in eight by twelve, then it's twelve by sixteen would be what your, your factor would be for impervious coverage.
Yes, yes.
Right, so each of those eight by twelve sheds is actually a hundred and seventy-two square feet for the impervious coverage calculation.
Yes.
And every twenty by ten is three hundred and thirty-six square feet.
Yes.
So, if you put two of these sheds on a half acre lot, you're now talking about six hundred and seventy-two square feet, or roughly three and a half percent of the whole lot size is now, thinking of like, two sheds.
Yeah.
Right, so?
What, what percent was that?
Three and a half.
Three and a half percent of your lot?
Would be impervious coverage from your two sheds, because if your shed is ten by twenty, you gotta go out two feet every which way, so now you're a fourteen by twenty-four.
Right.
To do the calculation.
And why are you saying it's impervious, if you have the stone on there?
You're saying?
You say there is no stone.
If there is?
Oh, if there is no stone, okay.
If I wanna do the stone, right, so if I'm, I'm not putting the eight inches of gravel down, now we're talking about, you know, six hundred and seventy-two square feet on a half acre lot, that's a pretty decent amount of?
Impervious coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah, the way this is drafted right now, in the proposed form, um, you could get two sheds, each a two hundred square foot, a total of four hundred.
That's correct.
Right.
So, it sounds like we're going back to one shed.
Right. Or, or wait, we talked about the aggregate size, what if we do, you know, let's say, if you have half acre, I'm just gonna use that as the template example size, you're allotted up to three hundred square feet of shed area, and you could have two, I don't know, ten by fives?
Yeah.
I, I guess, I mean, not like anyone would have a shed of that size, but, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? Like, you get multiple sheds, but just with a square footage cap as opposed to?
Specifying that you can only get one shed.
Right, right, exactly.
I don't mind the aggregate, personally, cause I could have a small one with my tools and a bigger one for my mechanic.
I have no problem with that.
I think Scott makes a good point, of your, you might wanna put your tools, your paint, or your, your, your gas cans in a, in a smaller one, right?
I have no problem with that.
Might as well have like a little four by six shed to throw all that in, and then I want a bigger shed for, for everyone else. So, as long as you don't hit over that number, it's just, if you go at the half acre number, that's a pretty big percentage that?
That's, I agree with that.
They don't put the eight inches of gravel down.
Okay.
I agree with that.
If we feel, well, if that even?
So, what I can do is I can?
Is engineerially sound, I, I don't know where the eight inches is going from, right?
I'm just, I'm doing it by the language of the scene, that's all.
Okay, so, this is, the property is limited, we should go to an aggregated number? Is that what, that's what we're saying? Aggregated?
I'm wondering about, in general, as a principle, you go with aggregate, and you can say up to two aggregate?
Well, you gotta put some kinda cap, I guess theoretically, if you've given two hundred square feet, they could put ten?
Yeah, depending on, depending on the size, right, depending on the, depending on the, the size of the lot.
Maximum of two, right, right.
Maximum of two?
Two up to?
With an aggregate.
Whatever the aggregate is based upon the lot size.
I mean, and if they try to build a bigger one?
That's fine.
Then they?
Have to come to the original. Right, and that's all purpose.
Permanently varying, so?
Right.
I like that, and, and, and because of that, can you go a little bit more multiple steps than just the two steps that we say here? Could you do the half acre, could you do the three quarter, could you do the acre, could you do two acres?
I don't think you should do it by any acres, because there's very few areas in this town where lots are uniform sized. So, if I'm at point four eight acres and my neighbor's at point five two, he gets to put double the amount, double the size shed on his lot?
What would you use then?
Just make it a number of three hundred square feet for everybody.
I, I just can't get three hundred on a half acre.
If you want two shed, if you want a little Rubbermaid shed to keep your gas cans in and paint?
I think that's a lot for small, I just think it's a lot for small lot.
If that's all you want on your lot is a shed, that's fine.
Yeah, but you might get some guy, you know, you're gonna get some guy's a weekend guy and he wants to build.
Everyone, lots of good ideas being kicked around, and we haven't, we haven't solved the problem, right? So, um, and we're looking at it from a bunch of different areas, uh, uh, and that's what we need to do. So, um, I'm gonna table this one, um, and as the chairman said, I'm gonna also engage with the engineer.
Right.
And also, again, look, and Dave, we should look at other towns and see how they're addressing it too, uh, but I didn't see anybody?
No, I didn't see anybody go with what we're suggesting, A, the drip line, and B, aggregate. I think that gives some nice, that gives flexibility.
Yeah, it, it gives us a, a good place to start.
I think so, and it's just?
Gives clear lines to work in.
No, I think it's quite, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I also wanna circle back to the setback.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so we have to set that to.
Because the thing part of, the setback requirement will actually, for the smaller lots, you're gonna hit such a coverage ratio that once you're six feet off of all these lines?
It's not gonna be practical.
Yeah.
You're gonna be really limited on what you do, you're not gonna be able to get three hundred square feet on these, right? Like, there's gonna be other things that supersede them, you kinda make it so you're not gonna be able to, but I understand that?
But, you know, you're gonna get somebody who's gonna do something, and then it's?
You gotta create it. People create?
Listen, I, I, I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but here's one other, just one last thing I wanna say. So, when I, when I look at surveys on a daily basis, a lot of people have these little Rubbermaid sheds, but a surveyor will actually note that as a shed. Now, a lot of times, they are up against a house. Well, I'm not gonna call somebody and say, oh, you can't have your Rubbermaid shed up against your house, because with those type of prefab little tiny things, so do we then also include, say, okay, you can have your little Rubbermaid, you know, buy from Amazon kind of shed up against a house? Cause a lot of people do that for tools.
They don't think of it like four square feet.
Well, that's my point, right.
So, I think you have to define maybe a de minimis.
Right.
Right, because again, if the surveyor calls that out, right, if the surveyor calls that out, it's a storm shed.
Because to him, it's a, it's a shed, it's a shed.
It's a shed, it's a shed.
So, like the garbage can enclosures?
Yeah, I mean, that's?
It's an accessory structure.
That's a de minimis.
So, I think that that, to that point, that's a good?
Yeah, I think so as well.
I mean, it sounds silly, but again, if we're really being, you know, as far as when it comes into me for a zoning officer?
I'll give you another really silly one, I'd like to build a wood, wood pile stack and put a little roof on it. Now, do I, does that, what, where does that, do I have to put a drip line on that one?
Is that a shed?
Is that a shed, or do I butt it against a shed, does that impact me?
I think a shed is defined by?
Just put a tarp over it.
I have, that's what I've got right now.
Just put a tarp over it.
Or, or those dollhouses? That's already called a wood shed, by the way. Okay.
So, real quick, before we move on, um, Tom, I just wanted to point out, um, that one edit you made of one thirty-four point four, we added four principal building?
Yes.
Um, I just double checked, it's covered, that's already covered by one thirty-four point three, um, which I'll read off to you. Accessory structures shall, shall be at least ten feet from any principal building situated in the same lot, and shall be at least six feet away from any other accessory structure.
Accessory structure, yes, that's correct.
Right, so it's already covered, so?
Okay, yeah, so we can actually strike that now, we don't need to include that, yep?
Yeah, okay.
And that, and that, uh, Tom, the LU one thirty-four dot three, which he just read out, talks about, no, that's not the one that, that's ten feet wide. One thirty-four dot four is ten feet between prin, principal building and structure to allow egress around.
No, that's one thirty-four point three.
And for fire access, right.
One thirty-four point four.
No, this one?
One thirty-four point three is accessory structure shall be at least ten feet from, oh, look at, I can't even read this anymore. Okay, what he said, one thirty-four dot three addresses here, Tom.
Right.
Alright.
Okay?
So, it's in there.
Alright.
Madam Secretary, could we?
Hold on, I'm not done yet.
Oh, Jesus. Trying to move on.
So, really fast, I wanna give you a little highlight of what's coming.
Yes, okay.
Um, so, uh, we are looking at first floor apartments, uh, that is in our master plan, that we should be looking at that in some of our zones. So, we are actively looking at that. We are also looking at the zoning changes, so like you have Sterling Village, which I think is B, B dash one twenty, I think it is, or one five, whatever. We're looking at that, there are several others, like, like, uh, LI two is now just referenced as LI. So, we're gonna be going through all of those, uh, changes, all those ordinances have it, so we're gonna be looking at a way to, uh, how, how do we expedite that efficiently, so we're not having to call every single LU? But maybe we can do it listing wise, uh, so we are doing that. We're also, uh, looking at, um, setbacks in the, um, business district, so the front setbacks on business district on Valley Road, and, uh, we're also looking at, uh, places of worship. So, those are the items that we are actively working on, there'll be things that we'll discover in conversations here, there'll be just, uh, things that I'll pick up in the TC meetings and other things that we'll look at. Those are the things that we'll look at, and if there are things that you guys see, let me, let me know, and we will see how we prioritize that. But we have over two hundred?
Right.
Things to go through.
Well, I, I wanted to just express my thanks to the ORC for their work, uh, so keep up the good work, and hopefully we'll get, uh, a bunch more ordinances up to the township committee here.
I'm trying to keep the TC busy.
That's fine.
Great, okay, so, uh, moving right along, um, I think we had asked for an update, and then you gave, uh, a roster of things, and you also sent an email out?
I did.
With regards to upcoming applications, et cetera?
So, I sent, in the email that I sent today before the meeting, so you have it electronically, I also left you copies of our updated roster, which includes Mr. Mitchell. And, uh, you have two applications coming up, uh, one in two weeks, you're gonna see the, the ground sign application. And then, um, I don't, the other one for Myersville Road, they are, so the, that's a minor site plan coming in with, they wanna do like paving, additional paving on, you know, so there's, uh, everybody's probably familiar with that property, they, there's a gravel area that used to be for parking, but the new owners wanna pave it, it's a minor site plan. But, they also, I'm sure everybody's noticed, there's a bull, statue of a bull?
Yeah, by the statue, yes.
Uh, that needs a variance from the board, uh, for?
Bull needs a variance.
It does, cause it doesn't fall under our sign ordinance. So, the, so the applicant is currently looking at, I basically said, hey, listen, you know, you need a variance for that bull, and any other signage that?
That's, that's a monument sign, is it not, is that considered a monument?
I would consider, and Luz and I discussed it, we would consider it a monument sign.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so, so they're, currently they're working on, uh, you know, I spoke with the attorney, they're working on putting, making sure that any signage that they propose is either gonna meet the ordinance or they're gonna include that in their minor site plan application.
Yeah, I, I really wanna see them get that place opened up, but they seem to stub their toe along the way. Um, so, I, I guess my?
Yeah, unfortunately?
If they're listening, I would say get in line to, to do the things right, and we'd get you open.
Yeah, they are, and, but they, unfortunately, they knew going into purchasing the property, they were cleaning up a whole lot from the owners that abandoned it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I do wanna see them, I do wanna see that open.
Yeah, but I do know that they've been working with the construction official to make sure that everything's, you know?
I see a lot of activity down there.
Yep.
Yeah, I know the gravel stone in the back area there.
Right, but yeah, those are, the signage and, uh, paving, it, it, basically, you know, if they wanna add a fence, a generate, anything you do on a commercial property, you need a minor site plan for.
Yep.
So, thus, so that's been the worst.
So, so with these upcoming applications, it's gonna be another plea from the chair to please communicate your status, and we, you know, we do not wanna be embarrassed by not having a quorum. Uh, it just, it looks bad, uh, it's a bad look for the town and for this board if we're not making a commitment uh, to attend especially these applicants who spend a lot of money, uh, to come before us. And we have, should have the decency to make sure that we clear our schedules. We're giving you plenty of advance warning in that regards.
Oh, you just might.
And also we've added, and thank you, a calendar invite for the meetings as a means to making sure that it's getting in your calendar, so hopefully everyone's seeing that and and things are getting uploaded onto your calendar.
Some are using it, some are not.
Okay.
We can start.
No names will be named.
Next meeting.
And I, listen, and I know that some of the zoning board members have complained about the calendar invite situation too because there are, and again, I'm not an I T person, but I know that if if anyone is having a problem accepting the invite because it comes from an outlook, you know, invite, I can't use different, because this is what the township.
Yeah.
Is mandated for me to use, so I can't use any other invite scenario. But if if you see, when you see the email from me, if you can't respond to it as an, you know, to accept the invitation, then just shoot me a separate email and say, yes, I'm going to be in attendance.
I have, I don't have it, I've got ordinance.
Right, I listen, what I would recommend, guys, is, you know, just to, again, to facilitate communication, work through those issues, is just respond via email.
Yep.
In regards to whether you're going to be there or not be there. The assumption is you will be in attendance if you do not respond, correct?
If you know you're not going to be there, you should.
It, you've got to respond with the with the affirmative. Okay, any other older new business in front of the board?
I I do have one item.
Yes.
I will be reaching out to Prism to, once again, reengage the the design aspects of the buildings on the T F site. So they haven't moved, they haven't done anything because they're still waiting for, obviously, New Jersey American Water to get the sewer water treatment plant up to par. But I'll have that again, every six months I've been reaching out.
Just so everyone knows too, there's a two-pronged approach here. They have to work on a Treatment Works approval permit themselves to hook up to the sewer. So there's two things going, correct?
Yes.
So each each of these developments have to get their permit to hook up then to the sewer, but, you know, it's a little bit of a. Right, they've got to, they've got to connect in more ways than one.
Yes. But yeah, I'll I'll go back because I know that we definitely want to make sure that we have that conversation about what those buildings look like.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good. Any other older new business? Great, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.